I'll call the meeting door.
Okay, so I'll make a motion and we include the minutes of our regular meeting on February twelfth.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Motion through the minutes of a non-public meeting, February twelfth.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor say aye.
Motion to approve the dissent agenda.
Anything further, Michael? Public input. You know, appointments, EDAC Chair happy birthday.
But did get some positive feedback from some of you within the chair of planning board. Well, and are presently reviewing the site plan review regs. To discuss what currently is, we probably might play things better. Um, so when we decided to book a proposal, it was one of the potential about being one of the worst for small business. Um, really be like cleaner guidelines on the website, contact Ed Walker, um, personnel. Um, make the site plan review process more business friendly. And I want to stress that this is an indictment of any staff or process currently in place in Swansea. Just an opportunity to make things better when we see it, though. You know, it's like any relationship, it can be good, but there's always opportunity to benefit. So what I'm looking for is support from our side. Do you have any questions?
What do you envision this being, if you like? You know, your bag. What did you see kind of happening with this? Do you see personnel involved or? You know, just.
Uh, quite popular personnel, well, also, um, looking at the website that I have designed websites in the past. Um, and statistics show that a person, you know, put on something three times. And if they can't find the looking for, they leave. So putting that in mind, I went to the town website. And thought, okay, if I'm a small business owner, I want to do this. And after five times, I still can find what I'm looking for. So for me, that's rough. So streamlining that kind of thing, making it easier, um, and more intuitive for people.
So do you think like you could have a group of volunteers or something that could? Help people, you know, kind of.
Why not?
Through the process?
Sounds great.
What were you looking for?
From you?
No, no, but when you were on the website, trying to find what a typical business owner would be, or a startup would be looking for, what was it?
What the application process would be. So I searched on a couple key words. Um, again, including what I used to.
Do we have any emphasis on economic development on the website?
Not our, our, um, committee, there's not a huge presence for our committees. Like planning and economic development is like a bigger umbrella.
So the reason I asked was if I was looking, that's where I would go if I was going on a website to find. Uh, information, and I just wondered, do we on the website have a header for economic development that we've? Do we have number one and number two? Does it, if we do, does it take it where you think it should go?
It shows up in two different places. One, under the header, planning and development, which brings you to mostly planning. Um, the planning board, and then economic development shows you are many of the objectives. But there, you know, anything about like initiatives right now in development, so I think we should do a better job of populating.
Yeah, I should pull this up.
So I didn't work out that again, the support of the board.
No, one, one comment that came up a few years ago was, was highlighting properties available uh, in town. On the website. I don't think that ever got off the ground. We just haven't had consistency in the department since Sarah left in eighteen. Is that something that the, the committee has discussed recently? If not, do you think that would be something that would be valuable to?
Yeah, a part of our discussions. Um, also, I looked at the current business listings and. It's, it's comprehensive, but it's not up to date. But like, pay a look at that as well, making that more accurate.
And on the little side, but along the same lines, did, did you have an opportunity to talk with Sherida and the Conservation Commission? Uh, with regard to the, the wetlands ordinances that. They put out this year and, and maybe working with them collaboratively to bring EDAC's opinion uh, into the mix?
I haven't talked to her about that specific recommendation that I talked to her.
Or the missing list of. Or at least input.
Yeah.
Which was necessarily not incorporated by anyone recently. Not that you know of, but it's. As encompassing. Yeah.
Who do you think she could like additional contact with at the town hall?
So the website, once we know what we're posting and how we're changing things, it'll be probably Katrina, but I think to work on getting the resources of maybe you're already on there, but better organized. That would be Adam, of course, and or St. Paul.
Okay.
All in the same room?
That's right. Just close the door and have them all trapped.
Right. Do we still require? New business owners to come in, not Mike York, Michael Better, to, to come in to the planning board first before they move in?
We, Adam gives us, uh, if he thinks we should hear. But it depends on the level of things. We don't really have multi-tenant anymore. We kind of did away with that. So, yeah, they, they can come in for a consultation in town. Without holding them or the planning board, they think that's set different than their thing. So. All your businesses come into the town, they want to check with the planning board first and how we feel about that project. And give them suggestions on how that project can go forward. Some people do that, and we, we encourage very much so.
Do we still require, uh, for example, uh, Genie's Diner? Sells, new owner comes in, does that number one, we still have to come to the planning?
No, it's the exact same thing.
So that's.
Another restaurant goes in, they know, they just got to contact Adam and know what's going on. Uh, if it's a different, uh. Type of retail, possibly.
Yeah, my understanding is because EDAC wrote a letter with regard to that process. Help screen my, my understanding is that the planning board still has the option of putting it through a cycle and review.
Right, we do have the option, but.
But it's not bottomed out.
It's not out of math, that's why they touch base with Adam. Adam looks at it and thinks it's been planned, but he's the wood guy. And brings it forth to us and we decide then if we really need to look at that or not.
Planning Board still sees it, though. Adam doesn't make that decision laterally.
No, he, he will, he will get a hold of Scott, he'll, we'll look at it real quick and then we'll vote if we think it's a major change in our. Like if you were gonna, Genie's Diner was gonna go left, you're gonna put an entire, uh, attire store. At the thing, it's a totally different change of business. Then we'd have to look at that. Because there'd be different things involved in that kind of story than a restaurant. I'll give you two.
Great, so, um, once we meet with planning board, I think we'll reach out to, um, Katrina and.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Need more people like we can.
My luck, George.
Do you have access to information from other towns, John?
Uh, contest wise? Yeah, um, it's kind of hard just because we're in between here. Uh, sometimes only three thousand, well, and then you have King, so. And it's a little hard to compare localities.
Can we drop to the fine water?
Yeah. It's more frustration, I don't know, but. Well, well, thank you. Um, I think we're kept pretty well, and so I'll show you the summary back in a bit. Uh, so the first page is a summary of the contracts we had over the years. Unfortunately, they didn't move away from five-year contracts, but. The three-year contracts, we can renegotiate halfway through the second, so it's a little weird about. Then the second page is just some historical data, they give you a rough idea of what we typically do year to year. Um, and that's a ten-year overview of everything. Uh, so we go up, down, punches, kind of hit or miss whether we're gonna get the same amount every year. Typically, our budget for solid waste is a thousand fifty tons and then a hundred and ten pulls, so that gives us. Six, six extra pulls a year just in case. Um, and if you look back to twenty twenty where it skyrocketed, that was. Good use for that right there. Then on, uh.
So. In, in twenty fourteen, there were eighty-eight halls. And the average tonnage is just under twelve.
Yep.
Per container. And then this year was, the last year was a hundred and six. But the average tonnage was under ten. Is it, is it? Is it because the containers are getting smaller? We're not gonna, what, what causes that change?
Cannot, can't miss. Um, it all depends what people are throwing away, um, the kind of material that's going in there. One of the things Nick and I have been discussing is trying to offset the containers, so we focus on just one. Um, and try to avoid that on Friday and Saturdays, but it is real busy, we kind of have to open up that second one. Um, and we have to ship it if it has stuff in there in five days regardless. Um, so that's kind of been a hit for that, but we're gonna try and start offsets, maybe shoot to. Ship one on Tuesday and then leave it empty all the way until Friday and then offset it like that. So that should save us a couple of containers a year at least and. Ensure we're getting the maximum.
Why is it every five gallons? What is the reason behind that?
I guess they don't want, that's stuff like that, snow, holders, stuff other effects, may put around.
So if you have full of five days, you take it.
Doesn't matter, yeah. And then we do have a minimum of waste management where there has to be four tons. Which is not hard to hit, but. Uh, we have changed some stuff over the years, like we do put mattresses and furniture under the compacters instead of wood bins now. So they take a little more space, so we're not.
Less weight.
Yeah, but then we're not painting waterway in the, compared to wood bin where it's just silken and rain or snow, so. Fit in a couple of things that maybe affected that a little bit and what people are buying really, so it's kind of. Kind of an option once, what we really get is a thousand tons, so it's a. Channel with that, but we're gonna start with doing the offsetting a container and see how that works and. That'll probably mean to be a late fall into early spring kind of thing. Sometimes. I don't think we'll be able to avoid that, just with the falling. We don't want to get a two-stake queue over there. And then, same thing with wood bins, we're gonna focus on really getting weight in there.
Do you have a sense of what bumped the, the tonnage this year?
Um.
Way too.
We did a lot of clean out this year, just stuff that's been kicking around, leftover stuff from construction. Um, so that was the majority of twenty-three, twenty-four disposal rates. Um, and then like for the C and B that reflects with the. Cover bridge, we're getting the majority of that, and we say it's. Roughly half of the boards, P's around, two projects and stuff like that, but we threw out. Probably at least a container full just forwards on a bridge, so. Kind of there. And if you look back through, um, twenty-four, K two pump seven, that's when we're using a different vendor for. Disposal of, uh, sheep raw and shingles. And at the time, they were cheaper, but looking at it now, it's not even close, so. We can sort of step out to clean wood, but then is it worth having an extra container for clean wood, but we might do. Two containers a year for it, so. Um, next actually gonna be working on that part of it, just doing some research and see what else we can change with that. The ultimate goal is just to give as much as we can, plastics, food waste, stuff like that.
What do you think's driving the bump to the C and D?
Tonnes.
Yeah.
Um, doesn't seem like there's been a. Eight or two sixty-seven.
Yeah.
No, I can, like, in twenty fourteen, it was, oh, I'm sorry, there were two lines.
Yeah, because I didn't want to turn amazing with waste management, but, um. Yeah, so the twenty fourteen was three hundred and twenty tons, so it dropped them quite a bit at least. Um. Even, but yeah. Um, so yeah, those are, you know, we.
And the next year was almost three hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, sorry, I didn't answer that, just missed right there.
He was gonna try to give you the answer, but before he did, I figured I'd say.
And then some years will have more roots, um, some years less, like the time you ever get many bathrooms, interior walls, stuff like that, so. Um, and why, why are we just playing back to it, there have been a whole lot, especially the past couple of years with that, you know, a lot of time. Um, and those typically will, uh, we want to shut that way, we can focus and. Get that one container out as soon as it's full, so it's not sitting there gathering any waterway or. Um, excess material that shouldn't be in there, so get rid of that and get all we can.
Is there anything we can do with the way that they're placed to create drainage? Or is the water way just absorbed within the material?
Especially sheep raw absorbs. Um, I do have holes drilled in. I don't know if I should then, but there's a hole drilled in the bottom of the container, so it does generate some. Um, over time, it kind of just freezes on it and can't be mushed with it, so. Um, and we could look into some, uh, container covers, but then we'd have to get manually painted on it, so. Can't shake all that that waste management, so make it a little difficult, but. Um. Yeah, it's just.
How much space is that, that you would need? Like, if you wanted to put a roof over the top of everything over those ones or something? Yeah, well, what would that, what would that take? Like, how much space do you use?
Um, it mainly just need to cover the containers.
How many?
Uh, two of them, we have a third one that I'm thinking about, and really save the four to five dollars rental fee for it. Um, so really, we'd be focusing on two of them, but then it's gonna be, I'm not sure the exact length, it's gonna be high and important.
It has to be almost like the soft banner.
Yeah.
And not as high as that, but something similar to that.
Yeah.
But if it's on a pad, they can roll it to, you know.
Yeah.
Why, why do they extend it up?
Yeah, that's true.
Why do they extend it up? Do they, do they dump that out or they take the whole thing?
They take the whole thing, but they chain it, and so then the roll-off truck is rail system like this and then.
Was up that high?
No, um, thanks.
I'm just thinking the snow and winter, oh, it'd be nice to just be undercover and.
Yeah.
You have nothing going in there.
Yeah.
Maybe one cost and then it saves us some paper itself over the years.
Hmm.
But.
And on the dock this year.
How much the salt shit was?
Hundred thousand, roughly.
The only thing that we would need side access, at least the one side for the containers. Um, for residents to be able to pull up and.
Must have poured like that and they went in and that'll, they could dump.
Yeah. I did have a rough layout for trying to change it to fall around, though, we have a metal, wood, wood all in the same area and then. If we wanted to separate some of those out, we do have a spare container that we can put there for. Polka glasses or food waste or whatever it might be. Um, because we do have a lot of room up there, so we can move stuff around fairly, fairly easily, but. Um, the E S regulation, we do need a pad under those regarding those, so. I was trying to figure out how we could save the pad we already have and then kind of just build around that, maybe add one more, but. Um, that'll probably be a good summer project this year, just to kind of reorganize a little bit and see what we can add some stuff and. Save some space too, and make it safer for people backing up, so it's not, especially the Melbourne here. Basic red sources current bit, so there's really not a whole lot of room with the brush that seems like now, so. Um, and that was. Yeah, got my permit today. Fine, did it? Yeah, fine, so, good going.
Or in Skylab or whatever, they're gonna be seeing.
Yeah, yeah.
They're gonna be melting lower than that, that's for sure. But yeah, so we got, we got some good game plans, Nick and I were discussing some stuff the other day. Um, along with the contracts and the stuff that we're gonna do is lower some of the halls per year. Um, food waste is gonna be a project, Nick's gonna start version on getting some plans, starting to pilot thing. Uh, number three through seven plastics is one that I'm gonna tackle, so he's gonna be down, he's gonna be the classic thing of the. Um, rigid plastics, like playsets, which you don't get a whole lot of, but it adds up over time. And then, uh, repeat drop off these and then ball field. Uh, because we don't go through there, they're recycling more just because it's brutal, it's inside of there. We found. That I, that hurt me, yeah. Condoms, you, nothing you want to deal with spitters, so that's. One of those things where I gotta talk that shit out, is there something we can do to kind of help motor it down to recycle more? Not add all that to the waste stream and start to re-pull out the. Um, so we have some stuff we're working on our end to try and. Ideally, eliminate what we're setting out and offset or maybe even like my, uh. Three, three, seven, five, six, especially food waste, um.
What, what's the game plan with food?
Uh, and this can be researching vendors, ideally. I'd like to make the angle of shipping it for now, um, because even anything under a hundred and one tons, we can save it as money as a fabric, but. Um. Future-wise, I'd like to start doing some on-site. Egg shells, vegetable scraps, stuff like that. Uh, but I want to see how this one will work and what we can do to subtract that evaluation, this will slowly start to shrink that back to, so we're gonna. Work on. Hard to say how much it's in there, but you can't compost like frozen pizzas and stuff like that, so it all.
Rebecca, for a second, how would you possibly separate? Big shells and that stuff to compost? How would you go about that? How does that work?
Um.
Does it, does it people to bring it, then you separate, and you tell people that's what you want, and then you?
Move out of bin or something outside, it's something, something to point in the right direction. Um, and it's one of those things, I'll let everybody do it there, but.
Yeah, that's a tough call.
So it's, it's gonna be worth it, but it'll be a lot, a lot of work to get into it.
Lot of commitment.
Make sure it's done right the first time, though, we don't have to change it back and. We want to start, get it out there, right, and then have it all sort of flow, and then. Ideally, have it grow a certain percentage every year to.
You want to try and sell some of those, uh, compost bin things, so.
I was looking at those, um, it's just, again, expensive, I think, like seventy bucks, because we can get them through a grant program through, through New Hampshire to be the fall.
More people to take them, the less.
Yeah.
Something to be done seriously.
Yeah, 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 um.
What, give them away?
Or just have a really good deal on?
Yeah, yeah, I was just trying to.
Try to get the people to take them home.
Yeah, so then it'll be it's all together and it's still that one. Bring it to us and then they'll ship it somewhere else, so.
Can you go back to the plastic thing about what were you gonna look into the plastics is? Because you were teaching me a little about that when I was there, and different types of plastic, so what, what, what would you do with that far as that, what do you want to do? How do you?
So, plastics is a unique one because you can separate it out so much. Right now, we're doing just number one plastic and then number two plastic.
Planting again, number one, number two.
Uh, so the ones, the little triangle on the bottom, they're typically all, almost all a lot of bottles are typically number ones. Um, milk trucks are always gonna be number two, clear colored. Um, detergents are always number, number two, typically.
The sunny bottles.
The sunny bottles.
You get more money for this, yeah, more money for this than number two?
And it goes back and forth, uh, one point those were more. Um, and then number two will go away, uh, it all, it all falls away a bit. Um, so say, like, uh, like number one, um, list string milk wash, the white ones, that's number one. It won't come as a glass number one because it's contaminated, because it's already got colorated, so it's not a clear C three container. Um, so the. Market that I was researching is one through seven, but we're even our, but our one, three, one and two, something that people lose money that way. But if, like, say, it continued, number one, we can put that in with the three, three, sevens. So then we're capturing all the plastics instead of just one and two.
Yeah.
Uh, a yogurt container, so.
Yeah, and number five, same, yeah. Um, the orange juice is a number sevens typically.
Hmm.
Um, and I mean. One of the things down the road, trying to organize and put a horse on Baylor is save like the. Number two, water jugs that are semi opaque compared to like, uh, good milk. It's all white. Um, the pricing of those two, if we were to separate just those two out, it's drastically different. I think it was up to seventy cents a pound right now for the natural color compared to if you mix the two.
And by now, we don't separate, we don't have the manpower.
Uh, we could, uh, Baylor's and then scale, then you need another space to store thirty-five barrels of it, so. More, over time, it will kind of, again, how we can really start separating stuff out. Um, because that's one of those things where the market changes and you don't want to jump on stuff, because at one point we were doing magazines. That was making money and then next year it wasn't, so it's. Almost definitely a little safer, so we kind of just had a mixed paper and newspaper now to hit the two higher markets at least. Um, and we can separate out off this paper from this paper, and that's high dollar value, so. You can really break stuff down quite a bit and make more money, but then.
Well, that would happen million-dollar bond to.
Two stories, two stories.
But you really could take it to a whole other level, sure.
Yeah, yeah, and it's really endless what you can sort out, what you reuse, um.
How we compared to other towns as far as what else, how far we go?
Would you say we, we pretty. We put a lot of work into it.
It seems that way.
I don't know what I mean, I mean, I know there isn't having that whole failed in material and then put it into the dumpster, because they just. Young man, the spaces sort of, so basically showing two hundred dollar bales and with a compacter paying. Fifty bucks for it compared to making two hundred bucks.
Wow.
Um, some places don't separate out paper at all, so it's just mixed papers, everything. Um, Nick and I did a tour of. One, I'm sure, last year, and I helped them, they're like, yeah, it was probably in our group, and went around and helped out, saw the big change and. They were doing, um, they had a horse on failure, but they were pushing up a seven pound. We're only pushing up three hundred. So everybody's got the same goal, but people do it differently, or how much they separate, how little. Um, some places even do the clear wrap, like for pallet pellets, like, I mean, clear wrap them all, that's a. Recyclable plastic of any ten thousand pounds of it.
You can do the pellet bags.
Yeah, yeah.
Crazy.
Yeah, so it's one of those things where it also boils down to the manufacturer, what they make their product out of, what they. And, and if like, or it's, it's. It's a whole lot that goes into it and trying to pick the best one, the. I wouldn't say least amount of labor, but meaningful labor to go into it and then trying to at least offset prices or makes a good revenue off of it. Um, right now, we're kind of holding off, we've almost got a bit full trailer load of, uh. Bailey Wounded right now, and if you ship a full, full bit, um, full trailer, a town of Norm's ship, you know, it was. Eighteen thousand pounds, so they have big billers, so they're making. Dense material, but they shipped it out, they got seventy-five cents a pound. I think they got fourteen grand back for it.
What, you hold out, you watch the price?
Yeah, yeah, so then, like, fall time, I think it was, uh, fifty cents a pound, we shipped it out. And now it's jumped to seventy-five cents if you fill up the tray. You could do half loads and get low pricing if you need room, but. That's where the shipping tank has been great, because we can overstore at this point to a hundred and ten percent. Make sure that we get every last pound onto it.
Right.
Um, same thing with cardboard, that one's a little. Same thing with cardboard, that one's a little kind of the basic one, we just, you don't really have to separate that anymore, but we filled that up and. Typically do forty two thousand pounds, and I think last one was fifteen hundred bucks you get back. So, which is a lot of this.
What period of time?
Um, cardboard, we do our ten loads a year.
Ten loads a year?
Yeah, so, um, and then we use twice a year, I think we got. And green back last year, sorry, so this year I'm hoping to have twelve, if not more, if we can really fill it out, you know. One of those things where the lungs sit on it, they're hurt or, okay, so. Take the gamble of the number two last year, and we were able to pay the whole extra money out, because we did a full load and all the ones are sold, and so it worked out really well.
Do you put it outside when you're holding out, like, and wait, and where do you put this, till, where do you hold it, just leave it up to the side, or?
Uh, depends what we have, so, yeah, cause we have the four storage containers, and those are dedicated for, um. Mix paper, newspaper, cardboard, number one plastic, and so, right now I think we have. Five bills, you know, one plastic out back, just waiting to see what the next one's pricing is gonna be, whether to order an hour or hold off that a couple of months or two. There's anything failed and processes like that doesn't count towards our data, um, two hundred fifty tons average of the year, so we. Any damage here doesn't count for that, so we could stop two of them if we wanted to. But then you gotta hope you don't get through, or I didn't get a hold of it, so.
A lot to it.
Much better than the Josh one, then.
Yeah, that was a pretty good one, thank God.
Oh, really?
Yeah, um, so then, um, the whole page shows the first proposal. On the top section for MSW, and then the right side is the proposal that he sent. And then the same thing, well, it's perfect, totally perfect, and then he said, so. Um, so like C and D went from seventeen point eight percent increase on a slow rule to eight point nine. And then four percent every year after that, and then all the cheese was twelve percent, then the seven percent, four percent increase after that. So, you know, I think it's a pretty good deal on the, um, you said the main. My counter offered it. Also, just because they reshow shoot with King, means that they would not tire a piece, so they didn't really have to. But they're, that's what they did now, so the numbers that I was asking for was cheaper than what they were for, so. Um, there's still a increase, but it's, I think we can make a little while. Do some part of it and stuff, but I think it's not that, that's at all, um. And this year I actually budgeted for a hundred and six a ton for the new contract, just kind of give my best guess on a hundred and seven, so. This year's budget shouldn't fall within my, what I was estimating, um, and especially if we can take a couple of containers out of it, so.
And what I'm seeing the, really good budget for that.
That was right about all. Yep, um, and so over the three year contracts, the difference between the first proposal and the second proposal. Whether it seemed to be in MSW was a difference of twenty five thousand, seven hundred and seventy four dollars or so. We're a pretty good chunk off. And then below the proposal summary, it's just kind of our budget for MSW and C and D. Uh, contract goes from January first to, uh, July thirty first, and then. August first to December thirty third, so I can break the year up for, expect this amount of tons for, so say. MSW's hired from January to July, because people are sending you their cleaning outs and. Springtime stuff, all that stuff, but then it's lower for C and D, cause then from July, people are finishing their outside projects, we're in higher volume with C and D later in the year. So then it just ensures that the pricing's right, what I've just reported, following throughout the year, and then that's tracked throughout the, um, budget tracker. Um, and then below that's just an example from the NRA about local towns where. You can't really base it off that, cause thirty six hundred population, that's half of, not more, but. Um, so their cost becomes a hundred and forty one, hundred and twenty one, so we're gonna be starting this new one a hundred and seven, so. I think we got a pretty good deal out of it.
Those are real other towns and their prices, they just didn't put the names, or are those examples, yeah, real?
Yeah, just considering what this contract lies and that stuff, so.
Um, these boxes here, it says one, one, twenty three, and. Okay, so it's supposed to be one five?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I figured, but I didn't know if you were using a guy here as an example or something, so.
No, that's one of those things where I just have the same advice over and over again. Yeah, and then on the backside of this, uh, with my proposal, um.
You know, you, you feel that it's, it's out of place, but you don't need to do a R P?
No, I think, I think we got a pretty good deal out of this, and, um, cause we went out for an R P in twenty seventeen, we only got one offer back. Um, nobody else in the population, and there's, the pricing was far higher than our current contract, but it was usually not behind, so.
You know who else put on teams?
That I'm not sure of, I'd assume probably Stella, um.
Stella's that big, if they can.
Yeah, I think they're trying to slowly come into the series, cause they're in browser. Yep, um, but in those three years, we could have a Stella in town, that would really support it. But yeah, and I think that's just the importance of trying to feed that material out. Really build up our recycling's program the best we can. Keep working on it, it's not what I do, so, those are always gonna be new materials coming out. Uh, new ways to do stuff, different technologies, and recycling plants are, so it's always, always following, getting better.
So when would this contract start, is it August first or July first?
August first, so. Got one of seven, kind of making everything so then, that's exactly what I'm ready for, so it should work out pretty good. And then hopefully by the end of this year, I'll have a better grasp on what we can take out and estimate how much we can take out for next year, so. The rates might be a little higher, but we could be disposing of less and make a little bit more revenue, so we're gonna try and. Keep us set for a greater increasing each, each year to try and achieve a higher diversion rate. I think we made it up for twenty minutes. Then we need to extend, offsetting costs last year, and the diversion was thirty four percent, I believe. So I wanna shoot to get up to at least thirty seven, forty, it's gonna be our goal for this year and next year, so.
What are you planning on getting over to some, there was a, in your program, that will prove, or?
Yeah, I got bumps this year, um, which kind of worked out better because. It's gonna be a lot of shipping stuff around, and I think it's gonna be easier having a new way, so we're building, um, replacing what we can, and then. Uh, the three base systems, and we can focus on waste, so two of the days, one where it's full, one where everything's empty. And so it'll also look better D S wise, um, and then the third base is gonna be all universal waste, like, um. Light bulbs, mercury containing products, stuff like that, so it's just all out there, we can ship it right in that building. Um, so that will open up half the warehouse and, cause I, how I picture is put it on the. Backside of the wall where the baleys are right now, just have a conveyor where we'll drop it, and it basically just bales, 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 and. It'll kick it out once it's full, and then you just start switching over to a different plastic if you want to, and then you just constantly running it, so. And then I dedicate the other three bales to number one, number two, and then the cardboard. So it'll, that'll open up a little more space for us to be able to ship stuff around, and recycle a different material, or. Separate it all from the same material, just to get better pricing, generate more revenue for it.
But in a couple of years, three years?
Maybe two, three, maybe that, that's. That's anywhere from seventy five to fifty, it all depends. Really, but that's like. Auto tie, it's got a scale right on it, bells and whistles, we don't, it's something, it's more stuff to break in my opinion, so. Keep it simple and it's got a simple job to do, so, um, too complicated, helping us.
More days to break. And then the scale loss.
Yeah, and that would work hand in with C and D, and ensuring that we're pricing stuff out properly, that. We're not overcharging, we're undercharging, um, and then we can see water weights or have something over by that time, so then it would be a. Clean, clear wash, um, so I talked to the chairman John about just making sure they're charging, uh. Obviously not overcharging, but following the drop off fee list, so that'll ensure that at least we're getting our end bit right. Um, and then whatever else we can, if people can reuse stuff, or, that's why we kind of leave some of the stuff off to the side, I mean. No sense in throwing it out in the dresser, if somebody's gonna come and take it twenty minutes later, so, um. Little things we'll tweak along the way, and just try and get whatever we can out of it.
How close is the revenue to the expense on the C and D?
I think it was about half, to be honest, last year, um, but then we had some stuff cleaned around, so it's really fast on it. Even if the bridge came, the bridge boards came, if we were to hit a scale, we could see exactly how much weight was going in there. So it's kind of hard to estimate, and then, um, everything else has been pretty spot on, right now we're. Fifteen, twenty bucks over on our electronics, so we're right where we should be with that, um. The mattress increased from ten to twenty dollars, and we definitely needed to do that, and that's where we're good, I think we're. Spot on with that pricing, um, and that's one of those things where it's all consistent, it's a mattress, so you don't have to. Eye ball, one needs to buy thirty bucks, so it's always gonna be fun, um, and then other items, like walk-in cars, we can buy box for it. We're starting to break out them over, and then instead of just hang the plaster out, but we forget the copper bearing, and we're just out of this, so we're gonna. Hire for some of that, and, um, it's all, all time, and how much you can make off the, some years it's not worth it, some years it is, so. All depends on our markets.
The scale, so we talking about a big scale where you drive up on and, and then you drive off, and then you weigh it, unload it, and put the truck back up on there, and. You know, and the weight, is that how it works?
Yeah.
And that's what we, you would like to have over there?
Yeah.
What else would you use there for, other than C and D, and what else would you weigh everything, like?
Um, but what other we could, could you use that, like? We could ensure when you say, uh, cardboard shirt receiving, that it is the weight that we weighed it out, so we can make sure that. He's not overweight, leaving, you know, against fruit or on pricing, which I've never seen, but I don't trust people that, um.
Is that a major cost too, a scale?
Yeah, um, I think I priced it out in twenty eighteen, it's like we need something brand. Nothing's cheap, yeah.
And the other factors, you need to have, be certified.
And then depending.
Which one?
You have to be certified, you use it?
Yes, I don't, it's actually called, what is it, Waymaster, Weights and Measures, or, there's some licensure, licensure to, that you appropriately know how to. Operate it.
Yeah, and then depending on which one you get, it could be confined space things, so you can't, yeah, hire a special company, you can't calibrate it. Um, cause you can't do ones that are underground, just bare bones, basic ones, so.
I can see where they haven't done it yet, there's a lot.
Yeah, 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 that's basically the sixty foot long scale. A lot of chuckle.
It's a lot of growing room in this department, I say, yeah, it's almost scary.
Yeah.
There's a long way you can go with this.
Yeah, yeah, and like, I'll be working with something that's, and.
Yeah, we're gonna have to wait out.
Yeah, cause then you need another person at the scale house, like.
Right, right, you gotta wait, you gotta figure out that. Thank you, thank you again. Yeah, yep. Turn it right up to Amy. Seventy, seventy, yeah, seventy, so you can, good, perfect, thank you.
Thanks for that.
See you guys.
So that's why I'd rather focus on getting the eye ball scale, than using as accurate as you can, um. It's like some years we'll get. Tick tock, and so those very anyways, so you can, if it was a scale, we did say. Ten cents a pound, we're gonna have a few, and we'll give.
I mean, you guess.
Yeah, so right now I have a level, uh, hundred and twenty five, maybe thirty, I believe, for a hot tub. So it covers it, but some of the water, and you can't really sit on it, keep it long, cause then it just piles up. And then some years we get none of it, so it's, one of those. It never misses, you never know, and then we've got what projects are holding, so. That's another big driving factor, good economy, more, more renovations, more new stuff, so, all ups and downs.
A two, that's over. I spent more time over that, but I knew everything about it one day, on the tour, and so on, I got this.
Yeah. I got you.
Shane, you're waiting. But this, oh, oh, yeah, that's right. But there's a long way you can go with this, I mean, pretty cool. You know?
Yeah.
Good for you, too.
Little good job, what you do.
Where are their waste engineers?
Yeah, exactly.
Waste artists, waste artists. So engineer, bitch, I heard.
Yeah, mixologist, my bad, send his fellow mixologist.
So yeah, I guess my recommendation's gonna be to go with the second proposal, and you said you drafted the contract after the one.
So we can think for a motion to authorize the solid waste management, there's even a picture into a three year contract with. Waste management as outlining the revised offer. I'll make that motion.
Motion made in second, and I'd like a discussion, if not, all in favor?
I mean, I know you're gonna work that kind of magic, I've been up last two days.
Yeah.
She was saying, I don't see the motion, I said, I didn't know you was gonna light that kind of magic.
You've been for three years now, huh? Yeah, it's coming, if we see something we need to change, but do, they're like, okay, I'll switch it up with that. I'm gonna keep, uh, I'm gonna leave this over. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Federation of Business. North Swansea, City of King, Waste Board Agreement, capital expenditure optimization. Gosh, she needs vehicles.
Make the motion that we need to come.
Pay the bill?
Pay the bill.
Second, motion made in second, and I am further on that. If you're done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
United Seven, March meeting second.
I'm unavailable. These gates work fine for me, um, the other item for consideration, and a valux I put in here, um. There's a little thing on the little page, twenty, about a possible workshop to consider.
That's not for me.
What about if we make March fifth, March fourth? Early, and then we had a meeting after, like, we see candidate.
We, we don't know who that, right?
Oh, you're talking about some, here's, you're not talking about these, you're saying instead of meeting on the fifth, meet just the normal meeting on the fourth.
Correct.
He's saying, he's not allergic, John, he's talking about just.
Now, go back to the time, since the fourth began.
Six seconds fast. Six to eight. We made it five, about five thirty, but no, if you wanna be five thirty, people, if you're down here, people are gonna be streaming upstairs, it's anything like that, here's the. You're gonna want, I'd say, four thirty for us, like. Alex would be here that day, so that will. Cause we're gonna do that upstairs. It's just a suggestion, I.
Let's give it to him, it's the blind squirrel thing.
Probably like a blind squirrel, but I can smell a nice.
That's what that's exactly.
Yeah, but don't worry about me. Are you, oh, you're in Conca?
Yeah, I'll be back.
Oh, you will?
Well.
We'll tell it at the end of the minute, so.
Yeah. So that week will be three, four at.
What day? So Alex's first meeting.
Yeah, so that's a part of workup, okay.
Be for Monday and Tuesday.
Right.
So I know my first guy.
That's right, good move.
Now on three eleven, we know that, right, and then what do we do after that, three nineteen? What he's proposing is a, an opportunity to, to meet with him, uh, so that he can review policies and. And the role the selectmen play. You know, the role. Oh, Alex. Yep, he does that and it's part of his program. It's part of his con- concerning contract with us, so the question is, when, what would you want to do with?
Uh, page twenty.
But we've got a seventeen, but the twenty. Yeah. The nineteenth or the twenty-sixth. I think we should do it as soon as the better, right, nineteenth and maybe since. I wish Alex is here, we need Tuesday. So I want to switch the meetings Tuesday.
I think he was thinking do that as a standalone, like maybe on the Tuesday, do this like, sorry, we're gonna need a Tuesday for a full record block just.
To be the new selectman, main building, him?
Yeah.
Two and a half hours of the lunch and one near Tuesday.
Can we get, can you get the double room, room set up for that, will that, will that meet here?
So that will be. I think we're. I, I can see the, the eighteen, you know, the other question would be. We go with what's fine, if there's a recap. Uh, and we could respond. It sounds like he's gonna have the sending, it's pretty much we have saved it down, so you should be able to just pull it out and do it whatever day. It's not just scheduled for the eighteen?
Yeah.
All right, we'll, we'll do it on the eighteen.
What time?
Um, one, that's a Tuesday. We can do it in the afternoon if you're available, if you want to do it in the afternoon, i- is that something we would do here, or go to the tunnel?
Here.
We'll do it right there. Okay, so we may use a new selectman. And lunch. And Alex, and they, right here, wanna say.
Sounds like if you throw lunch in, it's loud and hotish.
One, two?
Yeah.
Actually, it's like, you're gonna have to have.
Two o'clock.
Cabbage, two o'clock, or beef and cabbage. Oh, all right, I gotta be careful.
Green beer.
It's a seventeen, oh, but I'm not gonna do it, I'm gonna do it.
You don't want me here for lunch.
Oh, my leftover corned beef, cause I'm gonna do it Friday, Saturday. All right, so we'll do that.
Stacy, the two o'clock.
Here.
Two o'clock, Tuesday, eighteen, with Alex and. And then we'll have a meeting the next night, a regular board ma- meeting, which Alex is not gonna attend now, Alex. He can, he can. Oh, he can be on, what else? Much, she could. And then, um. Probably will be.
I know. You might make a power play.
Is he gonna get the packet out by Friday? The following week. What's that? Alex gonna get the packet out by Friday?
I think that's, it's working.
No, we're gonna, the new town administrator has to give you the packet for the weekend. It sounds like he's gonna be out earlier than Michael, it sounds like he was gonna.
He's on call.
You saw, you kinda got up when he was helping.
Last minute, Michael is gonna be calling, yeah.
You're gonna have so much time to review all this week, don't you?
Mike, did you send it yet?
What night is Wednesday?
Monday?
Oh. What's that? Monday, Wednesday, he's gotta get the packet out Thursday, probably.
We'll see how that works out.
All right, so, that's what they think. I see Monday afternoon. I agree, I, I see a quick resolution to our. And not the boring, what do you think about pulling the time up on our meetings that we discussed earlier too? When we sat down, to five, maybe you will get one, we can home a little earlier and.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, we can talk to the new selectmen and we can change the hours.
Public hair is happening.
Yeah, see, it's in your guidelines, so you have to go.
Oh, I, so move it up a half an hour.
Well, when you have a public hair. Try and go to six or so, give people a chance to come.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So you might start at five, you might be sort of, you're pulling the pumps for a half hour, maybe. Obviously.
Have to change that.
Well, I was used to it from Bill's fit, cause I know sometimes he likes to get home earlier and he likes to ask a lot of questions, so.
And you should take it on the road. We will. East Swansea Community House. Airport, welcome tribe, terminal, up to bone. Building club.
Jimmy's Restaurant. We just changed the board.
Now getting back to this question about, we don't like that we're meeting to.
Just, just the restaurant part.
Are you meeting every?
I think we, we're here, all right.
So you're not.
Yeah, I think we got it, so.
We got the four.
Three, four, four thirty, three eleven at seven, at the school, three eighteen at two for the training, three nineteen regular meeting at five thirty, three twenty-six regular meeting at five thirty. Consideration of potential larger changes.
So that's gonna be your role on the left. What do you mean, you're gonna be there?
What ship do you want?
No, we're tall, can we do that?
Yeah, there's no, there's no, we're taking pictures, so they have to show a photo, I did. There's no more about, uh, F A B S or, yeah.
I think the state still wants you there.
Oh, yeah. We don't have to take a picture, somebody don't have your license?
I don't believe so, you got a number, so they can't vote.
Can't vote, you need your license.
Yeah, well, picture I D.
Wow.
Personally, knowing that us really.
I don't think, we don't, we have to be there all day long.
No, it's the, what, what, is it the Secretary of State or the A G's office, which one?
I believe the Secretary of State, they, they claim small select, we're supposed to be there, I should, does any kind of do that.
Well, they checked us last election.
Were you all there?
Mm-hmm.
You all there?
We stayed.
Yeah, somebody in the restroom, but you're there.
That was a happy, happy coincidence.
It was perfect timing.
So, again, are you gonna be there with us all day?
Probably not all day, but.
That's a comfort day, isn't it?
No, we, we banged off because some of us have town meetings.
Some of you have towns, um.
When is it open?
It could do at three, eight o'clock, yes.
Eight in the morning, two, seven.
When it was seven to eight?
Maybe to make the note, cause you. Seven.
We're gonna freeze.
Change into seven, just got, and they got.
Yeah, I don't think we'd, beyond seven, we started seven.
Cause the only time to get backed up is after the beginning, right?
Yep. What, with the new layout? You know, with hours at the beginning. They're just quite slow. Yeah. Yep. And we got four thousand people through pretty, pretty easily.
I think in the morning, if you want. Yeah, but when I mean, four thousand people this election, we'll do what?
About two thousand.
Huh?
Four hundred.
Yeah. That's what we did last night, I think last year, it was twelve hundred, fourteen hundred, whatever.
This was a beautiful day last year.
So windy, windy, but not, it's snowing too.
Yeah, well, yeah, there better not be more people than you got. And uploading your ego.
It's gonna be a big one this year.
So those people stay home.
Yeah, he saw those people stay home, six hundred.
No, no, we need them on the water. Get them on the water. We need them on the wall. More, more is the better.
Uh, so I have a couple of things, did you get my voice now?
I can, I'll be back, yes.
You did?
At five, at like five twenty-five, just say it again, and we talk, yes.
Okay, which we should talk about that now.
Yeah, I got.
Oh.
Uh, but two nominations, which you part of the science, uh, renominating Stephen Biddle for the Capital Improvement Program Committee. And J R Cofield Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Motion, Steve Biddle.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion for.
J R Cofield.
J R Cofield, hold on a second.
I'm all in, say aye.
Aye.
I'll be, thank you. Any other old business?
Oh, we had a side meeting at.
Yeah.
I remember, two thirds wall. Two thirds wall. I totally, I totally. Pretty well, the wall are at least constructed, so, nice, get us a good momentum, we got some nice weather coming up, so. That'd be, that'd be a good change.
Like, is the wall, when I saw that picture, is the wall out, way to the top yet?
No.
It's still going higher than that?
Yep.
That, that picture you showed me is like the center of it.
Yeah, it's sort of twenty feet, I'd say now.
Twenty feet.
Yeah, you saw Ben's, like a third of the way up, so.
Really hard with those bags of destruction?
Most part, good.
And it'll start growing next year, right? Will we water it?
You will, it's not a drought.
Miracle drought.
Did you guys see the new wall? I got, you know it's gonna grow, right?
Yes.
It's gonna turn green, came to the meeting, yes.
Yeah, we, we need one minute, we need a water, it's all business. Public input, one last bite of the apple. Yes, Mark.
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up a scenario that, um, kind of played out on Thursday, a wonderful meeting. Um, and I don't wanna talk about litigation or the person, you know, the customer as much as the scenario. So, you know, the case where there's litigation and, you know, somebody, uh, named everybody who voted against them in the town. And now they have something coming in front of a board or, or the committee, um. It puts those committees or those boards in an awkward position, actually ties their hands, because now you have people who are named. Recusing themselves, and even if you're not mean, there's a threat, oh, am I really added to the litigation? Right, so it leaves only the people that. You know, the person felt most supportive of them to, to vote, and I think that's a horrible scenario, um, that. Played out and can potentially play out over and over again, and, um. You know, I, I, I think in that scenario, you know, maybe we need to have, you know, town council there, or maybe we need to be advised. For, or maybe, I don't know, you know, people, they've started accusing themselves, you might not even be able to have enough to vote if, and then what happens? Okay, you know, is that another lawsuit? So, you know, it's something to think about, um, going forward, because, I mean, this is, this is real life, this is played out. Uh, I don't think it would change the road or anything like that.
Wasn't one person accused himself that night?
One person accused, but if the chair decided to seat somebody else, that person would have probably accused themselves too. So, I mean, I think there's.
Well, the one hoping that shows up, whatever kills this out.
You know, so, you know, there, you know, there's.
But it's the answer to that.
I don't know the answer to it.
Yeah, I'm sure it's three, I'm saying two minutes, and finally. But you, but, if you say, if, if, if you say that three or four people excuse themselves that night, there wouldn't have been a vote. No, because you don't have a call. We wouldn't have been able to vote. And then that would, would, would be, come back and wanna take us to court again, because we wouldn't vote. Good point.
Yeah.
What makes you think of that afterwards?
Probably just don't wanna get into a discussion, receive public input, uh, my.
Yeah, but, yeah, so, you know, I, I just wanted to point that out, um, because litigation might be out there a year from now. You know, uh, who knows, it probably will be, you know, whether it's wanted or not, you know? And there are people named, you know, on this board, on that board, on all three boards in town. Cause there are all these people with other roles, so. It's, it's, it's not, it's, it's not a fair situation, the board, it, it ties the board's hands, you're doing your, your, your job.
Something to think about, thank you. Anything else? Hearing done, we have a non-public, I believe, under. I'll make the motion for a non-public, and then, same plea to it.